Hi there. And welcome. I am Judy Ball. I am president of the Legal Women Voters of Morgantown, Montegaly County. And I am unbelievably pleased to see all of you here tonight. Before we begin, I have just a very few comments. First, let me acknowledge all the hard work of the League board members who organized this event tonight. I was personally involved in just a fraction of it, but I did get a sense of how much work went into making it all happen. And thank you, all of you who worked on it. We also must thank Ollie for providing this terrific facility. The Ollie staff, I have to say, is just a joy to work with. Next, let me thank all three Board of Education candidates for being here. Getting candidates for any office to participate in these forums has become ever more difficult. Getting all of the candidates to participate is exceedingly rare. So we genuinely appreciate all of your being here tonight. Finally, before we get started, let me remind you how tonight's event is organized. The Board of Education candidates come first with their introductions, followed by questions and answers. We prepared questions from the League and will add as many audience questions as possible. We're going to be sorting out your questions to remove duplicates, not to censor your topics. We just don't want to ask the same question over and over again. Back to the Board of Education portion, we'll take a very brief break and then move to the magistrate voter education portion. So don't leave. Please, don't leave. We decided to do some voter education on the magistrate's job because, and I'll speak for myself here, I don't have a clue what magistrates do in our system. And so organizing a forum was sort of, what are we going to ask them? But first, we're going to do the Board of Education. And Barb Powell, our colleague from the Community Coalition for Social Justice, is here to moderate. CCSJ is one of the League's most important partners here in Morgantown. And we thank her for being our moderator tonight. I think she's also a League member.
No.
No? Well, she should be a League member. So Barb, you ready?
All right, thank you. I hope this is working. Welcome to the 2024 Board of Education Forum. As Judy mentioned, I'm Barb Powell. The event tonight is hosted by the Legal Women Voters of Morgantown, Montegaly County, a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. West TV will be filming it, and it will be made available after the event. As Judy mentioned, we'd like to invite the audience to submit written questions that will be asked at the end as time allows. You should have note cards and pens or pencils on your tables, and someone will come around to collect them at the appropriate time. So the format for tonight's event, each candidate has two minutes for introductions. I'll be asking a series of 10 questions that the League developed, followed by a few questions from the audience, again, hoping not to duplicate what the League has decided to ask. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. They'll be warned when they have 30 seconds left. Autumn here is our timekeeper. Then 15 seconds, and finally, when time is up. I appreciate it if the candidates will, in fact, stop when time is up. I know some of them are teachers; that's hard to do. We will be alternating which candidate answers first. After questions, the candidates will have two minutes each for closing statements. None of the candidates have seen the questions before tonight, but we are providing them now to them on a sheet that they have because we can't project them on the screen. And that keeps me from repeating them three times. All three candidates for the Board of Education Eastern District are here tonight: Ron Lidle, Christina Fattori-Morgan, and Sean Smith. And thank you for being here. We're very happy that you're able to be here. So let's get started. And let's get started with introductions. Mr. Lidle, if you'd like to get started, please.
My name's Ron Lidle. I'm the current president of the Montegaly County Board of Education. I've been on the Board of Education; this will be my 12th year. I started out a while back, and I said, "I have kids in the school system. I'm going to stay in the schools until they graduate." So Dakota and Missouri, my two daughters graduated, and I adopted two other daughters and decided I would stick around until they get out because I think I still have a lot to give. I'm currently the president, or vice president, of the West Virginia School Board Association, which is our 275 members of the 55 counties, five from each. And next year, I'll be president of that organization, which means, for one thing, I can work in a group of people that are so diverse because when you think about school board members across this state, we have everyone from the left to the very right. And they've chosen me as their leader next year. So if I get through this, I may finally, I guess. I've been very active at the state level, constantly giving input to our legislators to make sure the things that they're doing are well thought out and don't do more harm than good to our school system. Because one thing they never do is the unintended consequences of every single thing they do. They don't see until they've done it, made law, it comes down to us, and we have to deal with the outcomes of that. So, you know, I'm very, very involved locally with different groups. I stay, I got my 30 seconds. I didn't have long to sit here thinking about it while I was doing it. I stay involved in the schools. I keep my ears to the ground. I have teachers and other personnel within the school system that I work closely with, text all the time what issues are going on in the school system. What things do you guys, what are you concerned about? How can I help? How can I make the administration understand what you're doing? And how can we make this school system better? So my time is up.
All right, thank you for setting a good example to start. Dr. Morgan?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Fattori-Morgan, and I am so proud to be on the ballot for the Mon County Board of Education this May. I have been an educator for over 20 years now, and I'm a professor at WVU in the Political Science Department. Like many people, I came to Morgantown for a job, and I decided to stay and make it my home. I have two kids in the public school system. My son Leo is a sixth grader at Mountaineer Middle School. My daughter Lila is a second grader at Cheat Lake Elementary School. I've been married to my husband Andrew for 13 lucky years. I also, you know, I've heard a lot of rumors about why I've run and how I came to be on the ballot, and I decided to set the record straight tonight. I looked at who had already registered, and I did not feel represented. My interests and my concerns were not represented on that ballot, and so I decided to run myself. My interests are school safety and bus safety. I'm also concerned about academic freedom and making sure that there are no book bans that are coming to Mon County. I'm also concerned about teacher morale and making sure that we can repair teacher morale because that is far-reaching. That deals with attendance. That focuses on a lot of different issues that affect students in the classroom. When I think about myself and when I think about what I've been doing on the campaign trail, I've been very open and honest about what my stances are on a lot of different issues. And I'm so happy to be able to stay here and share them with you tonight. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. Born and raised locally here. I grew up in a split family, so my mom and dad were separated. I say that because I understand the struggles that a lot of our kids and our families are currently going through. We didn't have two pennies to rub together, and back then, you had to pay for school lunches. If you didn't have two pennies, you got free lunches. I was a recipient of free and reduced lunch. And I say that because I understand that there's a lot of bullying. And I understood at that time where kids aren't nice to each other. People aren't kind to each other. And I learned that through being poor. We can talk about a lot of groups, and a lot of people are picked on, and poor kids struggle just as much as everyone else. Overcame that and went to, got accepted to West Virginia University in the Engineering Department. So I graduated from the Engineering Department at WVU. That's where I met my beautiful wife, who's from Westover. She's a Kenyan from Westover. Those of you that know any Kenyans from the Westover area. We have two, most important thing about Sean is I'm a dad. I'm a dad to two beautiful little girls. One's a 10-year-old. She's a fifth grader at Brookhaven Elementary. She likes to do volleyball and makeup. And I have a 14-year-old, a South middle, who tried everything she could to finally find something she's involved with, and that's theater. She loves theater. She loves drama. We love the people at Morgantown Theater Company there. Some of our best friends, wonderful people, and I just love to watch her do that. She's also a type 1 diabetic, so I get to learn through the system of 504 plans and things that our school system goes through, and what teachers have to deal with and what nurses have to deal with, with Chloe being a type 1 diabetic. I've been leading change for my company for over 20 years. I've been in a leadership position for my company in doing process improvement and implementing new things and opening up new sites and hiring people and staffing. So I have a lot of experience with that. I am the chair of the Visiting Committee in the Industrial Engineering Department, and I am a volunteer for WVU Children's Hospital. I'm all about students, families, and our staff, and I'm all about love, love for all.
All right, thank you very much. I like that we're getting started paying attention to Autumn. The first question deals with the budget. What should the Board of Education do to prioritize a more racially diverse workforce for the public schools? And Mr. Smith, let's start with you on this one. We'll rotate who starts. Go ahead.
I think we need to measure it, and we need to share these measurements. I'm all about and always have been about metrics. And when you talk about being diverse within the racially workforce through the public schools, what are our numbers? And who is looking at those? And who is focusing on those things? Do we have, you know, in the NFL right now, to hire a head coach, you've got to interview a specific number of people. Do we do that within our school system? How are we looking at these things? And don't forget, there's a big shortage right now for teachers. We're having trouble finding teachers of any sort. We need to go out and we need to recruit. And as we're recruiting, we need to understand bounds, and we need to understand diversity. We need to understand who's best for our school system and how do we get more and how do we reach out to those so we can train our kids on what life is all about and what they need for their future.
All right, thank you. Dr. Morgan?
We have this problem at WVU where we cannot, we can hire a racially diverse workforce, but we cannot keep a racially diverse workforce. Part of the problem is the fact that, if you look around the room right now, we're not very racially diverse at all. People from different backgrounds want to live somewhere where they're comfortable, and they want to live somewhere where they're accepted. And we need to do more, not just as a Board of Education, but also as a community, to make sure that we are welcoming and that we are celebrating diversity. And that's something that maybe we haven't done right now. I think that celebrating diversity can be emphasized greater in schools, and especially when we talk about DEI initiatives, diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's something that the school board has not really invested in. We have someone in that position, but really, nothing has been done yet. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lidle?
Well, when I first sat here, you handed me that, and I was looking at the first question, and I thought, I looked around the room, and I thought to myself, there is not one person, not one minority at that point. Two have walked in since. And I have a personal friend of one of the two, and actually, two of the two, now that I see who it is. My contacts don't let me see far, I'm going close. I come from a racially diverse house. I'm the only person in my house that's white. So I have three people in my house from South America. I don't, I'm one of those people, and people say it all the time. When I get home, I don't think about it. When I go to schools, I don't think about it. I've been on the board for 12 years, and I've not had one person complain about it. Not one. I have friends that are teachers, that are minorities. Our language teachers are from their native countries in a lot of situations. I'm trying to think of where we have them when I saw that question, but I don't see it as the issue, and if that issue's out there, please bring it.
All right, thank you. Question two, let's talk about inclusion of the arts, music, theater, literature, and visual arts in our schools. How should students accomplished in such areas receive equitable access to facilities and financial support as are provided to sports? Dr. Morgan, if you'd like to start, please.
Sure. I think this is an excellent question. My son right now is getting ready to perform in the All-County Choir on Friday night, and this is an activity that he's been involved in. And just last night at the Board of Education meeting, we had the strings instructors for Morgantown County, oh, sorry, Mon County, come in and talk to us about how they feel excluded because orchestra is not as important as band because of its relation to sports. Sports are important. School spirit is important, but we need to make the arts important. We need to make sure that we're turning out for things like All-County Choir and the orchestras and all these different activities to prioritize them rather than just spending Friday nights at the football game. And so when we talk about funding, we need, I think this is just as, you know, right now, we're not doing the best job, but we need to make sure that arts are a priority as much as STEM is.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lidle?
Arts are very important in the school system. I don't know specifically where this question comes from. We have very good art teachers. We have very good musical teachers. We have very good funding. The question about last night and where the strings were after the meeting, I sat there and talked with the board members, is before we left, and they said, "I don't know where they got their numbers from." This school system has backed strings since I've been there. It's a wonderful program, and we will continue to back that. How do we move forward with arts? We start to make arts more of a part of what we're doing as far as a way to teach people to make a living because artists, you think, don't make a living. So one of those things we're talking about specifically with an art instructor at Morgantown High was how do we get into graphic arts? How do we get into art that is sellable on the internet? How do we get into what the future of art is? And that's the Renaissance Academy. And how we shape those programs to make it so those kids understand that workforce and art can go hand in hand, and that's just not a side show.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm biased. My daughter loves the arts, and she's in the theater, and both of them are in the choir. This morning, I spent two hours at the Met watching the strings and watching the choir at Brookhaven Elementary. I would love for that to take place at the school and be able to invite more people. We had to go to the Met because of size to be able to do that. So I am a huge fan of theater and the arts. And as a Board of Education member, I'll continue to push for that and continue to ensure that we are funding not just sports, but everything. I love, my daughter's always been involved in strings, and both of them love to be in the choir. So this is a really, really easy question for me. We will continue to push forward for the arts and different avenues for kids to be part of it.
Thank you. Our third question, we'll start with Mr. Lidle. Montegaly County has vast income disparities. What more can Montegaly County Public Schools do to support its students from families navigating poverty, food, and housing insecurity?
Partnerships with places like the food banks for food support. Our schools are passionate, currently passionate, about supporting people that have needs in their households. Backpack programs, the things we do to make kids safe. The school system has become not just a place to learn, it has become a place. The social, emotional well-being of our kids is a priority that sometimes overcomes education. And the reason it overcomes education as far as what we're concentrating on is no one can be educated if they're hungry. No one can be educated if they're worried about what's going on at home. We have kids come to our schools, people say about kids acting up, that their parents were taken from them the night before. They're sent to school the next day with a foster home, and they're expected to learn in class. You know, we have to start, that's continue education and making sure our teachers know that. That was a short one.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith?
This is one near and dear to my heart. I was at a Board of Education meeting, and I learned that we have 270 kids in the county considered homeless. Did you know that? 270 kids are considered homeless in this area. And we can look at it and say, "We can't do anything." And then I look at a program called The Source. There's a program, 501(c) out of Westover called The Source. You know what they do? They feed the kids at Skyview. We have packed backpacks for years, hundreds of them, and we send them to Skyview, and they take them home over the weekend so they can have something to eat. That's just one example of all the things we can do to help these kids. You can't learn on an empty stomach. And that, and do we have an avenue for these kids? Not only that we pack food for them, but how can we spend more time with them and show them that they are loved? Show them that they do have a soul and show them that they do matter? And that's what matters to me, and that's why I'm running.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Morgan, right?
Yes. I grew up in a single-parent family, and I know what it's like to have, to grow up in poverty. I think that we have some wonderful partnerships with organizations like Pantry Plus that have put pantries in our schools where students can not only get food, but also can get sanitary napkins, can get body wash, can get deodorant, things that they need beyond food. I think something, partnerships with local organizations like Pantry Plus are really key. And I was glad to read this week that we have figured out a way to make sure that students who need food over the summer are getting food over the summer through Pantry Plus. And so that makes me happy because that is something we need. We can't just worry about our students nine months out of the year. We need to worry about them every single day, rain or shine. We're going to be like the post-men, right? We're going to worry about them all the time. And so we need to make sure that there are food in those bellies.
All right, thank you. Question four, public schools are facing enrollment declines, teacher shortages, and funding reductions while at the same time having to manage growing challenges with behavior, mental health, attendance, and pandemic learning loss. Please name at least two proposed solutions, and we will start with you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, so there's a lot there within that question for one minute. I'll give two proposed, the teacher shortages. We spoke with the AFT Union, each of us one-on-one, and I had got some feedback afterwards. I was the only one that actually talked about teacher morale because I have a lot of friends who teach and a lot of bus drivers who drive buses. And their morale is so low right now, and they are so frustrated because of the shortages. And we talked about referral bonuses. How can we get teachers to go out and recruit other teachers? Well, they're not going to do it right now because of the morale issue. So we need to support them. We need to go out and begin to fill the staff first. That's one of the first things I want to work on, is filling the staff so they have more hands. Many hands make light work. So we need them to be less frustrated so they can focus on the kids. And when, as their morale increases, they can now refer other people. They're not referring their friends right now because they don't like what they're doing. But as they begin to refer, and then more, they can, we can have more teachers, and we can support the ones we currently have and support the new ones. The second thing I want to talk about is we do have a Safe Schools Act, and it's been around for a very, very long time. I didn't see the 15 seconds.
All right. I want to really thank our panelists for observing the time limits. Many of us have been to forums where, like, oh, yeah, right, that's just a suggestion.
I need to quit looking at the crowd and just look at Autumn. Sorry, crowd. Sorry, Michael.
Okay, Dr. Morgan?
I don't think that, Sean, you were the only one who talked about teacher morale. That's a big issue, not just here in Mon County, but across the state. And we're losing teachers. It's not just that we can, we need to recruit teachers. We are losing teachers. And I think one of the solutions is repairing the relationship between teachers and the central office. Many of the teachers that I've talked with don't feel comfortable bringing concerns, and I know Ron is waiting, bringing concerns to the central office. They feel like they're being walked over. And so that is one solution that we need to worry about. We need to make sure that we are communicating, that we are rebuilding that relationship. When we talk about attendance, I'll pick attendance out of this. I think it goes back to social work, right? We have outreach coordinators that are only half-time in our elementary schools. Why don't we have full-time social workers in our schools that can help school counselors deal with students who are not coming to school and have parent issues and family issues that need to be addressed?
Thank you. Mr. Lidle?
The number one thing that we're, we can do right now, in my mind, as far as the loss from the pandemic, is the K-3 aides for teachers, additional teachers in the classrooms. The state came back with an idea, and this is a specific idea, something I helped with, was, what do we do? We're going to put an aide in each classroom. That's a great idea. You've got an extra person in the classroom. But we talked about, what about having, instead of spending $35,000 a year on an aide, why not $70,000 on a teacher? And put a teacher and let them share between two classrooms. You have three professionals in two classrooms, same money. I begged them, and begged them, and they actually let that come through. So we actually have that. Oh, my goodness. Attendance, I can tell you right now, 98% M-Tech, 92% Morgantown High, 91% University High, 89% Clay Patel. Hands-on education, career tech education, STEM education, Renaissance Academy is our answer to attendance. I'll say, you picking that up?
All right, thank you. Question five, according to the West Virginia Balance Scorecard for 2023, no Montegaly County schools meet the standard for attendance. In fact, only six of the 17 schools scored partially meet standard. What can the Board of Education do to improve student attendance? And Dr. Morgan, we'll start with you.
I see attendance as a problem not just in K through 12, but also in, at the university where I teach. I think that this is really a problem due to COVID and having online learning and students not realizing the importance of coming back to the classroom. I also would say, and I'm going to go back to my point that I made in the other question, I think that we need social workers in our schools. I think that there are a lot of problems that we don't understand and we don't see, and teachers can't see. When you have 25, 30 students in a classroom, teachers can't see everything that's going on with students. And so having those social workers follow up with families, making sure that students know the importance of coming to school, and pushing for that is the important, the important part of understanding, understanding why school is important. Teachers do their best to make sure that students are interested in their classes. But when we talk about K through 12, K through eight, we're really talking about family issues.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lidle.
The one thing I've learned since COVID is to quit using COVID as an excuse for every problem in society. Best parent isn't taking care of their kid, COVID. This person isn't doing this, it's COVID. We have to quit. We have to quit. We have to quit using that as an excuse as a society. Ridiculous. The, what can we do to improve attendance? We need to start doing things to get people educated. We need to start looking at this as a generational problem, not a, "We're going to fix it next year" problem. We need to educate kids. We need to stop the dropout rates. We need to educate kids now. We've got to get them through, get them a good job. And then their kids will be raised in a family that has money and has drive. You have people dropping out of school because they're not interested in school. We're going to continue to have this for generations and generations. I thought that was my time, so. But yeah, that's what absolutely needs to happen. The school system is the absolute pit for every single problem in society. Dump it on the school system. Let them figure it out, and don't fund it, and then we'll see what happens. That's the moral issue that everyone's talking about.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, we have to support our teachers, and we have to support our admin. And I don't know where the headcount or what job it is, but we have to reach out to parents and start working with our homes. You say, "That's not easy," and I get it. It's not easy, but we can't just say, "That's hard," and not try it and just wipe our hands of it. I don't know if you know, but in Boone County, there's Sherman Elementary. You can look it up. There's a principal named Lisa Lowe. In Sherman Elementary, they won the Blue Ribbon Award for attendance. And they asked Lisa, they said, "Lisa, how do you have such a good attendance rate in Boone County, where COVID and other things also existed?" She said, "I have a good relationship with the parents." We build a relationship. We reach out to them. We ensure that we contact them. Is it going to be perfect every time? There's not. There's always going to be problems. We have to back our admin and back our teachers and make sure they have the ability and the time to reach out to these parents and get their kids to school.
All right, thank you. Question six, do you believe history, social studies, and civics should carry as much weight as math and science for students? Should those lessons be taught through primary sources or be limited to textbooks? And we'll start with you, Mr. Lidle.
I have a girl, Mark Casey, that is graduating this year, and she needs as many credits in history as she does in math. There's nowhere in the school system that I see us prioritizing math. Some people aren't math people. Some people love to read and learn history. One of my best friends is a teacher in history. He's the Mon County Teacher of the Year two times. Would you think he's less of a person, less of a teacher, and less important than someone that teaches math? Absolutely not. All teachers are treated exactly the same financially. All teachers have the same hours. And as far as the students go, I don't see where there's any difference. I mean, we actually emphasize that. And when they go to the classroom and there's a history teacher, they learn history. When they go to a math teacher, they learn math. When they go to science, they learn science. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know specifically where this question comes from, but I don't see an emphasis on any one subject over another. And if that's something that the higher education places decide is important, that's not, that's not the board of education's issue.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Again, my daughters love history. They love social studies. They're into those things. I'm an engineer. I loved math. I didn't think it was any better, or, or we should only do math and then no, no history. What do you do when someone wants to grow up to be a history professor? What do you want to do when someone wants to study history? This is, this is an easy one. Uh, uh, they should all carry the same weight, and all kids should have opportunity with different avenues throughout, um, all of our, all of our schools. We need to continue to give them opportunities, uh, to be what they want to be when they grow up, grow up and when they graduate. I, this is, again, this is, this is an easy one. This should be equal weight.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
I feel like I get extra credit because I'm a political science professor with this question. Uh, of course, I think history, social studies, and civics are important, so I'll concentrate on that second question about whether lessons should be taught through primary sources or be limited to textbooks. I think that one of my, my personal job as a political science professor who teaches international relations is to build a global citizen, to make sure that students know what's going on in our world and how our world functions, and how history has built this world around them. And so whether you're an engineer, whether you're a doctor, whether you're a government professor, I think that these things are important because it makes you understand, and it helps you understand how people relate with each other, whether we're talking about in Morgantown, West Virginia, or we're talking about what's going on in Israel and Palestine, or where you might end up in college. Relations between people are important, no matter what your field is.
Thank you. And question seven, how do you see WVU program cuts, for example, in math and world languages, affecting opportunities for Montague County public school students before or after graduation? What are your proposed solutions? And we'll start with you, Mr. Smith.
Well, you can say, well, this is Mon County schools, and that's West Virginia University, but this is part of our community, and everyone's been hit by the cuts, and it is going to affect, it's going to affect, you know, we, we already got rid of the master's program for some of the teaching and admin program for some of the teaching, and kids, and our recruiting has been hurt, but that's not what the question is about. But, um, it, it's going to affect, that just tells me that we need more opportunity for our kids now with STEM. We need more opportunity for kids to be involved and children to be involved in things that they want to do in the, in the real world. We also need to keep our students here. We want to keep our students local. We want to keep them local for our industry, and we want to keep them local, to, local to continue to grow. So we need to find things they can be interested in and not just focus on this or that because WVU has a program, but what do you want to do? We can find a way now to train you, and if you need secondary education, we can ensure that you get that as local as possible.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
I could spend easily an hour and a half talking about this. Um, I, I, my, my own program, International Studies, has been affected by the cut of foreign languages because many of our, we're an interdisciplinary program, and we pull from foreign languages, and without them, how are we training students to be involved in national security? How are we training students to do international development? Uh, that's a really big and important question. We also have students who sometimes take classes at WVU in their high school time, in, in their high school years. And so if those classes are not available to them, where are they going to go? Where are they going to go? We're taking away opportunities from our students as well. So I would personally like to see WVU have more of a closer partnership, which they already have a closer partnership with the school district, but I think that we also need to be concerned about dual enrollment and, and those opportunities for students as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lidle.
Well, I, when I, when I first heard about WVU's cuts, I made some phone calls. I said, what's going on? Certain, they said, there's actually professors and staff that have two or three kids taking classes. So it isn't Mon County schools that cut programs, it's actually kids choosing what to take when they get to college. And in honor, as an administrator in a school system, sometimes things happen, you don't have the need for something, and you make those cuts. So I'm not going to second guess someone else. I'm going to stay in my lane in Mon County schools. What are my, the one place that they, WVU is lacking, and I've called this out over and over again through a couple of different deans, is the education department. We need, if you want to stress the importance of education, K-12 education in West Virginia, what you need to do is you need to tell the university, which I have many times, you need to prioritize this. State leadership, I've told them, you need to prioritize, you need to fund education programs. So we're getting high-quality teachers out of the universities across the state and specifically here at WVU, because we don't have a problem with staff, uh, professional staff, but across the state they do.
All right. Thank you. Question eight, what more can Montague County public schools do to support and protect LGBTQ and gender non-conforming students? And we will start with you, Dr. Morgan.
This is a super easy question. I think back to last year when we were having this discussion about whether pride flags belonged in the classroom or not, and the superintendent said that we couldn't have them in the classroom because they were an ideological flag, and they were not. When you talk about whether someone is LGBTQ, or trans, or gender non-conforming, that is their identity, that is not their politics, that is not their ideology. And so just the language we use around this is, again, whether you are for pride flags in the classroom or against them, the language you use to discuss this, the seriousness you take in order to have a conversation about helping these students fit in and be valued in the classroom is something that we definitely need to work on, not just as a board, but as a community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle.
This was an eye-opening experience for me because, for, for one major reason is, as the president of the Board of Education, I made the decision not to put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. We have one board member that has people in her family, uh, that, that are currently, uh, you know, they have a partner in the same sex. So what I did, I went, I researched this, and I didn't research this by reading books. I started telling people, if you want to talk to me about this, let's go sit down and talk about it. So that's what we did. We were taking kids, we was putting a flag in four, four classrooms in a school. Those were the safe spaces in the schools, safe spaces. The rest of the teachers obviously didn't provide safe spaces, which is really a shock to those teachers. So I met with someone, because I got 15 seconds, at Panera Bread. We sat there, we was having, we was having lunch, and I was talking to them, and said, do you feel safe here? And they said, no, I do not. They looked around in Panera and said, no. What a travesty that she did not feel safe there. What an absolute travesty that she did not feel safe there. That is what this society has done. By putting pride flags in one classroom, not the next, you pigeonhole people and you make their safe space their jail. We can't do that. We need to change society, not putting some, something up in a classroom. Sorry for that. I'm very passionate about that.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
This is an easy one for me, and it starts with the one word that we're all called to do, and that's love. We're called to love one another, we're called to support one another, and we're called to be kind to one another, and we're called to care for one another. I have many people within my family, and I have many people within my friend circle who have all made choices that might be different from mine, but it doesn't mean I don't love them. It doesn't mean that I'm not part of them, and it doesn't mean I don't care for them, and it doesn't mean that I don't want to protect them, and I want to do all those things. It's extremely important to me, and we need to do that with any kid that is struggling with anything. There's obesity, there are kids that are poor, there's kids who have many, many different areas that might make them feel a little bit different, and we need to continue to love them.
All right. Thank you. Question nine, teen suicide, school shootings, and student mental health issues often point back to bullying, both on and on school grounds. What policies are needed to deal with bullying at school, on social media, and elsewhere? And we will start with you, Mr. Lidle.
One of, one of society's challenges right now is social media. How do we deal with it? How do we police it? What do we do? Where do we draw the line? Where the school's responsible, where the kids responsible with their schooling, and where they're not? If a kid's home and they, and they go to see their neighbor and they get in a fistfight, we don't suspend them from school. When do we decide where social media is school-related and when it's non-school-related? What a question. If someone has that answer, let me know. But bullying, zero, zero, uh, zero times. Somebody calls me and says, my kid's being bullied, I call the superintendent immediately because that is my one employee that I actually deal with, that I'm allowed to deal with by policy. And I say, what's going on? And they check that, or I tell them to copy the superintendent, myself, and the principal at that school an email that says, this is what's going on, please address it. And I have never had a return email after that that has been addressed in the school. We have zero tolerance for bullying in our school systems.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. It's a good question. It's one, another one that's near and dear to my heart. I have, uh, three, I have three nieces and two nephews that are minorities and have struggled. Two of them have struggled really, really bad as they went through high school, and I got to counsel them and sit down with them, leaving school early and having to come home in tears because of the way they were treated and, and the bullying. So I think it's extremely serious. I think it needs, I think we need to step our game up on the repercussion and the things that could happen to bullies. Even at a young age, there's laws in place you've got to be careful with. Even the young age, you've got to cut it off soon. And I think it goes back to what you see in the world a lot, even at airports, for, if, if you see something, say something. We have to get back to that, and we have to cut it off. Cut it off at the head and end the bullying, no matter what it's about or what the category is. We need to end the bullying and begin to love our children.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
Someone posted something on my campaign Facebook page about how their child feels uncomfortable about going to school because of bullying, and how that has affected them not just at school, but beyond school as well. So I think when we talk about, especially social media, social media is 24/7. We can't turn it off. We can't, we could try to keep our children away from it, we can try to, to watch over them, but the truth of the matter is, we don't have control over it, um, and we don't know how to deal with it. But I do think when it comes down to bullying, if bullying is taking place outside of school and it affects a child that they don't want to go to school and they don't want to be educated, that is something that the school board needs to address.
All right. And our final question from the league, what specific steps should be taken before a child is removed from the classroom, either temporarily or permanently? And we will start with Mr. Smith.
This is one, we got to follow the process. There, there's a process that the state has put in place. If it's something that needs to be addressed or looked at or revised, we, as a board, can, can work with our legislatures and make sure that we put new things in place, but we got to follow the process. The very first step is to ensure that you report it. Reporting and non-communicating gets us in trouble all the time. You can never over-communicate. As soon as things begin to happen, we have to communicate that, we have to document that, and we have to follow all the steps. It protects the children, it protects the families, and it protects our wonderful teachers, and it protects our wonderful administration. When you have all of those communicating and following the correct process and following the steps, then we can follow through with the correct discipline.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
I think that this is, you know, I, I think of education as a team sport. I think of us all as teammates, even, even us up here. We're all teammates when it comes to education, because I think of families, I think of students, I think of teachers, and I think of the central office and the Board of Education, all working together to provide the best education for every single child in Mon County. No one's talking about families. And when I've talked with teachers, I know that teachers kind of, especially with discipline issues, kind of roll their eyes and say, it's impossible to talk to families when it comes to discipline issues, but we need to get families involved. What happens at school doesn't just stay at school, there needs to be families, teachers, and students working together to come over, to overcome, uh, these discipline issues.
All right. Mr. Lidle?
Continue education is one of those words teachers don't like to hear. Uh, we need, we continually dump education on our, on our professionals and, and to learn how to deal with kids that are, issues in the classroom and those issued, issues come from outside forces. I, I mentioned earlier about someone being taken from their home on Tuesday night, and they go Wednesday, maybe they take Wednesday off, but Thursday they go to school. Uh, they don't know where their parents are at, their parents are in jail, their parent, they were taken from their parents, and they got to go to school, and that teacher's got to deal with that kid, and the behavioral issues that brings, the sadness that brings, uh, the lack of concentration that brings, and what a great job they do and how they understand that. Uh, one of the board members that are currently on, said, one of their students stood up through a desk across the room, they take the rest of the kids out of the room, they, they calm the kid down in 15 minutes, then they take the kids back in, and then the kid gets home two days later sitting in the same classroom. That's federal people. That has nothing to do with Long County Board of Education. Federal, you can't remove them. IEPs are the problem.
All right.
Wish I had more time on that.
All right. Thank you. So now we have a couple of questions that have come from the audience already. Okay. Thank you. Were the following issues up for a vote today? What would your vote be? And the first one is on banning books in high schools that are considered classic literature by traditional scholarly standards. Two examples were given, Catcher in the Rye and To Kill a Mockingbird. And we will start with you, Dr. Morgan. So a question about banning books in high schools that are considered classic literature by traditional scholarly standards, how would you vote?
I would vote no.
All right.
Are, are we getting, like, are, is this amended?
You've got amended, I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure.
If you want to say no for 60 seconds, you can, but you have amended, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Um, no, I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I think as long as books are age-appropriate, do I think that my seven-year-old should be reading To Kill a Mockingbird? No, I don't think she should be. Do I think, I, I mean, these are books that I read in high school, these are books that I enjoyed in high school, and they help us learn about the world, and they help us learn about other people around us. We live in a, you know, in a small town, we do live in a small town, and for us to learn about, I, you know, I, I never visited Alabama, and for me to learn about race relations in a small town in Alabama in the 1950s was eye-opening to me. And so I think this is the way we learn about our world, this is the way I learned about my world. And so I think book bans are bad. Keep the, keep the books age-appropriate, but don't take books out of the classroom.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lidle.
The answer was no, absolutely not. Age-appropriate books, I've been on the board for 12 years, I've never had one person complain to me about a book their kid read. The only one I've ever seen was myself. My kid was way ahead in about first or second grade, and she brought Hatchet out. And if you guys know the book Hatchet, that was not age-appropriate for her kid, and I read the book, and I was like, wow. Uh, not, not age-appropriate. So that was one mistake that I've made, and that, and she's now 26 years old. So that was 20 years ago, there was one, one instance that I know of, but I've not heard one issue with a book in our school system. Our professionals is, we have to trust them to teach our kids, we have to trust them to pick books that are appropriate, stock their libraries. These kids can get anything they want on their laptops and their, and their phones. Let a professional do their job, either in the classroom, in the library, in the administrative office, let these people do what they're trained to do, and absolutely no on banning books.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Same. No on banning books. Uh, it's funny, I have a lady who got, made know her, she used to be the mayor in town. Charlene Marshall was one of my mentors, I love Charlene. And I said, "Charlene, how come that," and there's a lady, I would not say her name, but I said, "How come she doesn't like me, she doesn't look at me, she won't shake my hand?" She's, she's, she's a politician, if you will. She said, "Well, Sean, I talked to her, and she said, 'You're going to come in there and ban books.'" And I said, "Well, that's funny, never talked about banning books in my life, don't agree with it." And I, we're actually not doing that. So, why don't you share that message with her, and I'd love to have coffee with her. We're not banning books, keep them age-appropriate, continue to educate our kids on the things they need to be educated.
All right, thank you. Another question from the audience, again, were the following issues brought up for a vote today? What would your vote be? How do you feel about the school board's current land use and transparency and planning for future land use? And we'll start with you, Mr. Lidle.
I'm not sure exactly what that question.
All, all I know about the question is that it came from someone who lives in Suncrest.
About, say, can you read it one more time?
Sure.
I'm trying.
Yeah, no, I understand, I, I had to read it a couple of times. How do you feel about the school board's current land use and transpa, and about, I guess, transparency and planning for future land use?
Has to be Suncrest Middle School, has, this has to be where this question's coming from. We need a new Suncrest Middle School. Um, we have, uh, we have instructed some people to go out and try to find some land and work with some landowners and try to acquire land so we can build a new Suncrest Middle School, which is part of our comprehensive education facility plan, which is CEFP. So would, are we, I don't, I don't know if someone's offended by what we've done to knock on some doors and to talk to some people, because we need about 20 acres. And if you see 20 acres in Suncrest, let me know. Uh, we've had open conversations with the university about some land they have. Uh, we're really focusing, land use, we're really focusing, focusing very hard, making, keeping Suncrest Middle School a neighborhood school and being able to make it the school it needs to be and expand it in the future. And if that's, if that's where that question come from, uh, there's nothing non-transparent besides the stuff that we have to do legally and with real estate. Because if I went to your house and said, "We're going to buy the neighbors and yours," prices go up, we've got to be smarter than that. Same with Suncrest Elementary when we did that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Well, yeah, that's a, it was a tough question, but we need to be, uh, it's one though that comes up and people ask about certain land that the Board of Education has bought over, over the years and what are they going to do with it. It's like the land in, in Brookhaven, there's a big field and we cut the grass every, every month. And people ask me all the time what we're going to do with it. I'm not on the Board of Education yet, so I can't really answer that question, but I will soon. Uh, we need to be held accountable for all the money that we spend and, and the land that we buy. And we need to be wise. We do need to just remember that, um, sometimes we buy some extra land for, for future use. So as long as we have a plan for those things. But again, we should be held accountable for all the money that we spend buying property.
All right, Dr. Morgan.
I understand that question a little differently, especially since you specifically said that it came from someone in Suncrest. What I understand is that there are a lot of people upset in Suncrest about the lack of communication on the, what, what is happening to the location of the old Suncrest Primary School. And so what I understand in talking with people from the community is that the Board of Education decided to do what they will with the, the land. And what I understand is that it's now a park and that they're waiting to move over. They were going to move over some sort of swing set, and they haven't done that. But people like input, people like knowing what's going on in their community, and there just seems to be a lack of, of communication there.
All right, thank you. So another question that we have that came from the audience. How would you advise the school district to handle a challenge to curriculum material? And we'll start with you, Mr. Smith. How would you advise the school district to handle a challenge to curriculum material?
Is that saying?
It doesn't say what kind of curriculum, it just says, "Challenge to curriculum material."
Well, it shouldn't be one person deciding. If, if there's a challenge from, I don't know if that challenge is coming from the parents or people are wondering about the material within a curriculum, it probably would come from home, then we have to, as an administrative, get with the administration and get with our teachers and listen. And as a committee and as a team, not just as five board members, let's get together and talk with these people and listen to what the opportunity is and make a solution. Uh, that, that's not specific enough, but i- if something like that gets addressed. And that's why part of our campaign has been, "Parents with a Voice." We, we want to, we want to listen to what this opportunity is and make decisions as a holistic county and as a holistic team and not just a few people on the board.
All right, Dr. Morgan.
Sure, there's a policy that's been proposed that is going under a series of readings right now where a parent can come to a teacher and ask questions and demand a list of, of books that are in that teacher's classroom library. And the teacher has to provide a list. And, and again, this is a policy that is proposed, it has not passed yet, but is being considered by the BOE. Um, the teacher needs to provide a list, and they also need to provide reasoning for educational materials. So I, I think to myself, my son reads, uh, he loves graphic novels, right? And a teacher would have to explain why they have the Babysitters Club in their classroom or why they have Hilo books or Dogman books. Um, and, and I think that opens the door to, to a lot of problems where parents, parents need a voice and parents need to be listened to. But we also need to trust our educators to know what is attracting and what is interesting students as well.
All right, Mr. Lidle.
When I was elected to Board of Education in the past, the first thing I'd do is I'd get sworn in by a judge and I would follow the state's laws and, and uphold them in our school system. And the only thing that oversees state laws is federal law. The state passed a law that said, "You guys will provide your curriculum, your material to the parents." We're not considering a policy, we're going to pass a policy, I thought it already passed. We don't have a choice, we can't complain to Charleston. We do not have a choice on whether we provide. If I'm going to take, like you guys kept this till tonight, uh, we can't surprise students with a piece of paper in their classrooms. And you know how many people have asked, that I know of, when I ask this question, zero. People just want to have laws on the books so they feel good about the fact that they're in control. And once you give them control and give them the option to ask for the literature, ask for the stuff, curriculum in the classroom, zero, zero people have asked for it, zero. So if somebody got something passed because they thought it'd be a good idea, they could oversee our teachers, after they got the control, well, they got the tiger by the tail and didn't want to keep up with it.
All right, thank you. Another question from the audience. How would you incorporate teacher input feedback into solving the problems faced by Mon County schools? Again, how would you incorporate teacher input and feedback into solving the problems faced by Mon County schools? And we'll start with you, Dr. Morgan.
I'm a social scientist. Uh, I believe that we should be having focus groups and interviews with our teachers. Things are going on in our classroom that we are not, we don't see, right? We don't see from our perspective. We don't know what goes on in, say, the seventh grade English class at, at South Middle School every day. Um, and so why not go straight to the source? Why not talk to the teachers? They should be involved in policymaking, they should be involved in, in helping us understand those problems. We shouldn't just make assumptions about what those problems are and what those solutions are. We always need to start from the ground up. And I think involving teachers in these solutions is a great, great start.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle.
Every single time. When I get asked a question from the state, "What are we going to do on this?", I have a teacher group that I text constantly. Two of my friends that are teachers are the teachers that you would never believe are my friends. It took me four years, maybe five years, to get their trust. They send me questions about stuff, they send me information about stuff, they feed it constantly. Because the first thing I did was tell everyone in that school system, "You can call me, you can text me, tell me what your problems are, I will address them." Sometimes we won't agree, sometimes we don't agree, but I listen on every single point, everyone. And I've got many teachers, uh, many service people that find me to be someone that's a resource for them and also a friend, I've become friends with a lot of them. Uh, so it's, it's, it's the most important thing we can do. Because if you think Ron Lidle is the person that would know how to run a school system, you're wrong. I, I know how to run an organization, and the way you run an organization is to rely on the people that are there day in and day out. That's the most important thing we can do, is listen to our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. When we started this campaign over a year ago, the very first thing we did was reach out to teachers. And we reached out to teachers and we began meeting with them to see what the opportunities were. I've been blessed in my life to be a listener, and I love to listen. Well, don't ask my wife, but for most of, most of the time, I, I listen. And I believe that people buy into what they help create. So the people that are part, are going to be part of this have to help us create solutions. They have to help us create new policies, they have to help us create new processes. We, we shouldn't be making decisions on how they do their job without listening to them and spending time with them and understanding the current issues. And not just from Brookhaven or not just from Cheat Lake, but let's, let's get a wide variety and diversity of who we speak to and get a good feel for what's really going on in our operations.
All right. I think you're up the hook for questions. There are plenty more, I've got a whole stack, so if yours didn't get asked. There are a lot of interested people here, which is wonderful, and you can contact these people during the break. It's time now for closing comments, closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to do closing statements. And I guess we should probably start with you, Mr. Lidle. I think it was your turn to be asked.
Okay, the, uh, I wrote down some notes as we went through here, and that's how I'm going to do my closing statement. I've decided to do that, do it that way. I have a daughter that's, uh, that was selected to the Governor's Art Academy, one of 11 kids across the state, uh, to go to Marshall University for 21 days as a junior. I support the arts in my household, I support the arts by buying arts. Don't ever wonder about arts, as I talked so much recently about the STEM education and the CTE that we are pushing. Uh, the, the classroom with the, with the, uh, history classrooms. One of my friends is a teacher and he just got back from Washington DC. He took kids to Washington DC. That's where the classrooms are, the classrooms are out there in the thing, in the, in the, in the real world. Something on Suncrest Elementary land, I, I had a meeting, you know, just because it's, I, I think the most important thing is to make the point that I listen. That's what the most important thing any of us can do. I had a meeting with the city manager, the mayor, conversations with the community, out there on Facebook, answering questions in social media about what we were doing with the Suncrest land. It is going to be an early learning center someday, that's what the plan is. We made a deal with the city of Morgantown, they can put playground equipment and use that with a partnership with Boat Park, is what we decided to do, because they did not want to take it over because they, that wasn't in their interest and we wanted to keep it for early childhood. We, I, I am the president of the Board of Education, and I consider myself lucky to be a leader in the number one school system in this coun, in this state. But I am not happy with that. That's not where we set the bar. State of West Virginia is not where we set the bar. We are trying to move forward with the STEM Academy and CTE Academy, the Renaissance Academy is what we call it. The most important thing we can do for the future is that facility. And I want to ask you guys, that's the one vote that I want you guys to make, is for the Renaissance Academy. It is so critical for works, workforce development.
All right, Mr. Smith.
I've been involved in this community for a long time. You can go around and, uh, everywhere I go, people are like, "I saw your sign, I saw your sign." And when you see those things, I want everyone to know that those were purchased by supporters. People gave us money for those signs. Everywhere you see one, that area was donated. Hey, come give us a sign, come give us a sign. We're not knocking down doors asking people where to put signs. People are asking us to come out and do that because they support us, and this community supports us. And it supports us because for years, we have been part of it. From Children's Hospital, before there was a Children's Hospital, we visited children. We've been packing lunchboxes for Skyview Elementary for a long time. We've been feeding people at the Red Door for years, our homeless community. PTO meetings, I've been to more PTO meetings than most, and it's not just Brookhaven and South Middle. I go to them all, and we have for a long time because we want to hear from the community. I tell, these two have heard this before, and I'll, I'll say it again. I was at a Morgantown Area Partnership meeting the other night, and the lady said, "Well, which one of your kids is in band?" I said, "Neither, why?" "Because you're at all the band activities." "Well, it's not just about my kids, it's about our community." Uh, the FFA ladies, the, the 4H. "Well, which one of your kids is raising chickens? You're here at the livestock auction." None of them. My kids don't do this, we're here for the community, this is what we do. I'm at a University High School Ladies Basketball Game. "Hey, uh, I didn't know your girls were in high school." They're not, we're here supporting, we have been supporting. We've been running this campaign for over a year, and we're not going to stop, and we're going at it hard. And, and listen, if you know about the Board of Education, it's not like you're doing it for the money. We, we are doing this for our kids, we're doing this for our families. And starting May 1st through May 14th, if you want someone who's going to work harder than anyone, you vote for Sean Smith for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
I've been an educator for over 20 years, and I come to this election with that experience. I know what it's like to go into the classroom when you're bone-tired and you still have to go put on a good face to get kids to learn. I know what it's like to spend hours bringing up lesson plans and different activities in order to get kids excited for learning and to keep them interested in the classroom. I also know what it's like to not have that work valued, and that leads to low morale. But I'm a parent, and I also know what it's like to get a text in the morning that says, "Your kid's bus isn't running." So when I think about the Board of Education, and I think about this immense responsibility that we're all asking you to vote for us, I think about this experience that I've had, not just as an educator, but as a parent as well. I've been completely honest about my positions, about my policy positions and issues that are important to me. And if there's something that I didn't get to tonight, please feel free to stop me. I hear there's cookies asking for it. Um, please feel free to stop me and ask me a question if it wasn't answered or visit my website or call me, I'm happy to talk with you about anything. Um, I also ask you to not listen to rumor, right? Just because someone, uh, is saying something doesn't make it true. Come to the source, come ask the source about what I think and what I will stand for. Communication is key when it comes to education. We need better communication, not just from the central office, but from our schools, from our teachers, and from us, from parents and families, to let those teachers know what our kids are going through. And I'm asking for your vote, I'm asking for your vote on May 14th. Um, and I promise to represent all of Mon County, thank you.
All right, I get to make a few closing comments. Um, early in-person voting starts next Wednesday, May 1st, runs through May 11th, every day except Sunday, 9 to 5. Three locations, Mount Neere Mall, right here, right around the corner. Um, it says, "Front side of Mall next to My Island." For Morgantowners, it's the old Goodwill, that's where you all know it is. Mason Dixon Park, 79 Buckeye Road in Core in the Red Barn. Suncrest Town Center, 525 Suncrest Town Center Drive, Suite 101. This is new this year because the old door stodge that we've used in the past was not available. For early voting, you can go to any of these sites if you're registered in this county. However, on Election Day, 6:30 to 7:30 PM, you must vote at your assigned precinct to guarantee it will count. I'm going to put on my poll worker hat for two seconds, this is a very long ballot. Those of you who saw the paper this morning know that. If you looked at the ballot and you were confused about what precinct you belong to, please go vote westvirginia.com or the county clerk's website will tell you where you belong and what ballot you will have. The important thing is, that school bond issue is a long issue on the ballot, there are a lot of words. If you don't know what it says before you get there, you run the risk of your, but your machine being timed out. You only have five minutes if your machine doesn't do. If you don't do anything on your machine for five minutes while you're trying to figure out what that bond issue is about, you're going to lose what you did. So please be prepared. I know Carrie Blaney is really stressing that with people. Know what you want to do, the same thing with the levies. Know what you want to do before you go. We have a new registration system this time that's probably going to take those of us who are poll workers a little longer to figure out what we're doing. So please be patient with us, especially the first couple of days of early voting and on Election Day. Anyway, back to the script. Absentee ballots must be mailed and postmarked by Election Day and received by the start of the campus, which is the Monday after Election Day. For hand-delivery, absentee ballots must be delivered to the county clerk's office by May 13th. You may surrender an absentee ballot that you have not voted when you come to the polls for early voting or on Election Day. But if you've already filled out that absentee ballot and bring it to your polling place on May 14th, it's not going to count, so don't do that. Uh, please. So anyway, thank you all for coming, thank you for letting me add to the speech. We're going to have a short break, please stick around for a voter education discussion on the responsibilities and duties of magistrates in our community. Our speaker is Justin Hirschberger of the Montegalia County Public Defender's Office. Following that, any of the candidates for magistrates are here, may meet informally with you. I did hear there were cookies, I saw cookies. Vicky is nodding that there are cookies. Um, how long a break do we have, Judy? When do you want people to reassemble? 10 minutes, all right. Thank you all for coming, and thank you especially to our candidates.